All right, I'll call the meeting to order.
Just pressing your button.
I think.
That makes me so happy.
That's not how you do it.
I know.
You see the little thing here?
Are we good, Mr. Gilberto? All right, folks, we're calling the meeting to order. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record, this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. We are recording by Zoom. The town is also recording by Zoom. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we are to our first order of business, which is to introduce our new Director of Elder Services in the Senior Center.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gilberto.
I'm pleased to welcome Kim Manzelli, who is here this evening, who is our new Director of Elder Services and Director of the Senior Center.
Kim, please stand so everyone can... Everyone who's joining us can see. I don't know if they can see you, but...
You got her on camera there? All right, great, thanks.
You don't just see it, just a wave. I just...
Kim is a familiar face to many of us. She is a former Council on Aging member and also a resident here of the town. She served on the Council on Aging up until, I believe, 2021 for a few years. It was also active in our pursuing our designation as an age-friendly community in the 2018-19 timeframe. She is a registered nurse, although her responsibilities don't require her to be one, but she has a nursing background, and was initially involved with care at an assisted-living facility in Reading, which was bought by a third party. And then she was... responsibilities were increased to multiple properties owned by the PBD Properties for overseeing services provided at those locations. So we're really excited to have Kim here in this role. Moving forward, we had said going back a number of months, almost a year, maybe exactly a year, that we were seeking to hire the Director of Public Services, which we have. Hartman is here, as everyone knows. And so there was an interview process that was conducted, led by Lilian, assisted by Dan Greenberg of the Council on Aging. And Lilian, am I missing anybody from that group?
I believe we have Catherine McCabe Scott.
Catherine.
The Council, you can get resources.
Excellent, thank you. So we had...
And Sherri Keller from the library.
Yes, that's right, thank you. I knew there was somebody that wasn't named. So we're pleased to have gone through that process, and we sort of want to thank the community for its patience as we've gone through that process. But before I conclude my comments, I do want to recognize Sherri, who's here this evening. Sherri and Susan kept the place going for us beginning in January when Ms. Preney retired, making it available. And unfortunately, it took a while for people to realize that it was still open, that it was open and that services were being provided, but they did a fantastic job of providing services at a place for folks to go in a really difficult time because I think things were very straightforward during the thick of COVID because everything was closed. It was sort of the reopening that was more challenging, as I think we all know, for all of us to some extent. And they really did a fantastic job of balancing things and providing services for the community, reaching out to folks by phone if necessary. So I want to thank Sherri. Susan could not be with us this evening. She had another obligation, but I will make sure that I catch up with her tomorrow. But Sherri, we have some flowers for you that I'd like to give you just to say thank you. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, well, welcome, Kim. Thank you, Sherri. And I don't know if anyone else has any comments. Good? Mr. O...
Yeah, no, it's welcome again. We look forward to all your new ideas and expanding programming and telling us what we need to do as far as the Senior Center. We know we need to expand the facility, never mind the programming. But some new, fresh ideas are great. And Sherri and Sue extremely grateful for all that you did to hold this thing together for us. And you're fortunate. You've got great people around you, you've got a lot of support here. All of us in the community as a whole, we're grateful for you being here. We're grateful for the people we have here and wish you nothing but success. And your inaugural address yesterday was terrific. She's on the job six days and she's all right, up front and center of a give a speech at the Senior Dinner, which was wonderful. She did a great job.
Anybody else?
I would just like to say Sherri and Sue did an amazing job and can't thank you guys enough. The way you did through all of that.
And Kim, I know you're going to be great and you have a fabulous team with you. So it's all good. It's all up from here.
Yeah, I was going to say, so Kim, we started working together SSAT back in 2012. Then we did NRSAT, then we did ACT. These are all leading up to the age-friendly initiative that we've done together. So, Kim, I can't think of anybody else better than you sitting in that seat than you. Really glad you came back into the fold again. We missed you over the last year or so when you were busy. So welcome. Obviously, we will be talking a lot. And Sherri, thank you very much. And all the staff there kept everything going. You know, as far as I'm concerned, the town's eyes are watching what happens here. It's really big. Got to shift gears and move up here. And can't have a better team than you have right now. But nice to see you again for the work moving on.
All right. Do you have anything else?
Welcome.
You know, you're not new here, welcome. We look forward to changes and upgrades, like everyone said. So thank you. Very excited to join the team. I'm fortunate to have the great support and the strong team. All right, well, thank you.
Don't feel compelled to spend the entire evening, Miss.
Get out while you can. Next order of business is to review the proposed MBTA Communities Action Plan.
Madam Chair, while the town planner is approaching, I think the news is a bit more encouraging for us than it was the last time we were here based on the reports I've heard from the planner and from the planning commission. And I'm sure you probably have experienced in your day role as well. We are, I think, sort of uniquely positioned because of the foresight of so many before us with the development that's taken place already in town and the dense development over the Wilmington Town Line. I'll let the planner tell us some more, but I think we do have a potential plan moving forward, which is good because the consequences are actually more dire than initially recognized and not complying with the MBTA Communities Action Plan. But I think we're well positioned.
All right, so we're joined by our planner, Mrs. McKnight, who, for anyone that's joining us, this is not an overnight thing. The planner has actually been looking at this, studying this, working on this, revising it, looking at it again for a long, long time, over a year now, right, Danielle? Probably even before that. So Danielle has already addressed this at a number of meetings for us, discussing it publicly at these meetings. So this is not a new topic that we've talked about, and we look forward to hearing what you have this time around for us.
Thank you. You should have in the information packets a memo describing the action plan as well as a draft of the action plan along with the questions that have been asked. So if there are any questions about that, certainly feel free to ask me, but I will give a quick summary of what we put in there. So the CPC has been discussing the requirements for the new MBTA Communities of multi-family housing mandate. And we're recommending targeting 10104 Lowell Road as our compliant district. These two properties already have a high concentration of multi-family housing, and they already do have the benefit of by right, multi-family zoning. We anticipate that the only change that would be needed to the zoning for these properties would be to remove the special permit requirement that's associated with site plan review for these properties. The next requirement in this process would be for towns to submit an action plan to the state telling them how we believe we will comply. And so we have prepared this action plan identifying these properties as our target area for an eligible district. This action plan is in binding. The strategy can certainly be changed, but we do need to submit an action plan by January 31st in order to stay compliant with this program and to not lose our ability to receive certain state funds. So we certainly can submit our action plan by the deadline and change strategy if we find that we need to do that. To review, we must have a district that allows multi-family housing by right. It cannot require a special permit. It must be at least 50 acres total, cannot be town-owned land, and it may not restrict age, unit size, or bedroom capacity in the zoning. The project can restrict it, but the zoning can't restrict it. 10104 Lowell Road are already affected by the multi-family residential zoning district, which was put in place in 2017 in order to enable the Martins Landing development. And these two properties, as you can see on this slide, they do meet the criteria for the type of housing that they have, by the type of zoning that they have that allows housing, multi-family housing by right. And the area is 98 acres, cannot be town-owned, and the zoning does not restrict age, unit size, or bedroom capacity, even though at least one of the individual projects does. The multi-family residential overlay district does comply, except for that requirement that is town-wide where site plan review requires a special permit. A more traditional site plan review process without a special permit required would still be allowed. The district would be these two properties only since all of the surrounding land in the multi-family residential overlay district is town-owned and would not qualify. And this is just a breakdown of the properties that comprise the multi-family residential zoning district. Previously, we had been concerned that already developed land would not count, which is why we had not really focused in on these properties exclusively. However, as the state continues to release information and guidance about this program, we understand that land counts whether it's developed or not. And we are supposed to look at land as though it... we would assume that it could be raised and redeveloped. While some area from within 10104 Lowell Road could be eliminated because it's not developable, for example, it has wetlands on it, the property has 98 acres and should have ample space to meet the requirements. The properties would be subject to the multi-family residential overlay as they are now, using the dimensional requirements of the underlying industrial office zoning also, which they are subject to now. And those limitations are 60 feet in height, four feet in stories, and 50% of a maximum building area. The state is set to release a compliance tool soon, which will take us very specifically through an analysis of our chosen area and confirm whether it applies. Without this tool, I can't say with total certainty that it will comply. However, based on the best of our understanding of all the information that has been released to date, we believe this area will be eligible and with the zoning change that we discussed. It is our recommendation to go ahead with submission of the action plan so that we remain compliant with the program, with the more detailed analysis, public hearings, and zoning change to come later in the year once the compliance tool is available to us. While the CPC recommends this approach, we recognize that we've been preparing this action plan on behalf of the town, which is why we wanted to discuss it with the select board prior to submitting it. The board doesn't need to take any specific action, but if your consensus is that the CPC should go ahead and submit the action plan as it's written or with any changes, we will make sure to do that by the January 31st deadline. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments, queries? Mr. Walner?
Just a quick question. As a reminder for people listening in too, what's the reward for satisfying the mandate? What did the town get?
We do not lose...
It's not a reward.
It's actually, so it's a mandate. So we don't lose the ability to get master's funding. We don't lose the ability to take advantage of other state grants, still possibly to be determined. DHCD has given discretion to basically prioritize communities that meet this mandate as opposed to communities that don't. And communities have been discovering that while it wasn't explicitly explained when the legislation was first discussed and passed, a large number of communities have a very significant component of their housing authority funding coming from the casino gaming funds, which a lot of communities didn't know. And so at least one community has been discovering recently that they have a huge loss to their housing authority budget because of that, because of not being compliant. So I think we know about most of the really big risks, but I don't think that it will even really end there. I think that there will continue to be state grant programs, more and more of them added to that list of possible risks of loss of funding. So that's really something we want to be really careful about.
Thank you.
Anything, anyone else, Mr. O'Leary?
Just as far as this whole compliance in this MBTA community, what's our bogey? How many units do we have to commit to in order to be compliant?
Zero. So what, we have to have a minimum of capacity of 750 units in our chosen district. Now, we actually know that our chosen district has at least that capacity because it's already been permitted for over 900 units in the form of the Polte and the Martins Land and the Edgewood Development. So there's no production requirement. We don't actually have to produce any new housing. It happens to be that because of the way this property is zoned and because of the way this property is zoned, there has already been quite a bit of housing developed there. So there's no requirement for units to be created. It just has to be zoned that way. So it's possible that going forward, if Martins Landing wanted to come in to ask for more units on that property, if Edgewood decided that they wanted to reconfigure things and ask to put in more units, the zoning currently does say that it's by right zoning, they can have multi-family subject to site plan review. So the change that's happening here is really in the removal of the special permit requirement. It's not really a change in the use that it's zoned for currently.
So we're fairly confident that we could basically say what we've already done will put us in compliance if we just change the zoning on and remove the special permitting?
That's all this program requires.
It doesn't seem as though it's very productive. Let's put it that way. It doesn't seem like... And again, the initial feeling we got, and I'm glad you looked more deeply into it because again, there's no way we could come into compliance if we had to come up with another 750 units to... with our sewerage. There's no way we could come into compliance. And again, we're set up to fail. With an MBTA system that isn't functioning very well anyway.
Besides that.
Aside from all that. But I find it hard to believe, and again, I'm a little skeptical, that the state is going to give us a blessing on this for something that all we're going to do is remove a special permitting requirement on some housing that's already built. It doesn't add to the housing stuff.
It's just making it a district that allows for that housing without having to... So it can be already developed and nothing ever come of it.
There isn't much left to develop.
No, but it's just changing it so that it's by right. That's all that... When the regs came in, it didn't allow for that. You had to pick another place, but they've since modified that.
Right. So we're lucky to have that. And there are towns that don't have that and are going to suffer from it. And we would if we didn't have it.
I'm just a little... I had this nervous twitch here. I had this nervous twitch developing.
Seems too easy.
Yes, move forward. If this is what it does for us, then move forward. But I had this nervous twitch kind of developing.
Because they're going to change those laws again and again, and they'll change their rules, and they'll change their regs, and they'll modify their regs. And I think that's what Mrs. McKnight is saying. The way it's worded, they could just possibly decide any kind of funding. Chapter 90, you're no longer eligible. We rely on that because we don't have enough revenue coming in. We rely on that funding to do the things that need to be done.
I'm just concerned that this isn't going to come to fruition. But again, if this gets us...
We're going to think positive.
Positive.
I would encourage the planning commission to move forward with the application.
All right. Let's hear it from Mr. Studo, and then we'll figure out what we need to do for you.
I will piggyback on Mr. O'Leary in just saying that it just... we don't want to give the perception, even though maybe we now become compliant, that by doing this, we're somehow going to get to certain residential housing goals. Because I feel that some are already grasping at this development as you see what we can do, we don't need to change the town. So I just want to be very clear that this doesn't become one of those things where all of a sudden the CPC is put in the line of fire that, well, the CPC said that now that we have this great MBTA plan, that we can just, you know, we can just do housing all over the place without changing the makeup of the town at all. So I just, you know, that's my concern. Because this already happened in a previous meeting with members of the Finance Committee, where they used this presentation to say that this was, you know... Where I agree with Mr. O'Leary, I don't see how... If this is the way we need to be compliant, yes, but I don't see how this is going to bring us any closer to what the spirit of the actual MBTA community, what they're trying to accomplish. That's all I'm trying to say.
I mean, I think the whole philosophy behind it is obviously housing production, housing development, and multi-family housing. I mean, there's other tenants that have to be... There's other requirements that were studied and looked at. And that's why you probably zoned in on this because it met the other requirements. This wasn't just the only thing where it's probably mile and a half or it was within a distance of another metro real.
So actually, we don't need... Because we have no MBTA facilities within our borders, we don't have to meet that requirement that it's within a half a mile because we don't have any land area like that. I think the reason that a lot of communities are struggling really hard to meet this is when you have an MBTA facility, your housing has to go around that area or most of it does. Because we don't, we are not tied to that. I mean, imagine if we had an MBTA stop or a station or something on Main Street. We would now have to figure out how to rezone 50 acres, which is wild. And we have this area that happens to be huge that we chose for multi-family housing a long time ago. It is very fortunate that we have it. So I think that that's one of the reasons why it's become... We're finding that it is a lot easier for us to be compliant. Now, I will say that once the compliance tool is released and we go through the whole exercise and we analyze and we spit it, type in our zoning, and we upload our maps, and we get a result spit out, you know, we may find that we have to make further changes and adjustments. I can't guarantee that because I haven't seen the compliance tool, but from everything that we know, this does seem to be the easiest course of action. And the state has also offered to take our application and review it before we actually submit it. Not the action plan, but when we're finally ready to go to town meeting for a zoning change, they will review it and ensure us that we would be compliant given the zoning change before we go ahead and take any full action at a town meeting.
I had two questions, but my colleagues all said. That was one of my questions. When I last reviewed these, even though we were, you know, I don't want to say primary, secondary, but community with services versus a neighboring community. I forget what our designation... We have a specific designation. It read to me like we had to pick an area that was within a certain amount of miles from even a neighboring community's commuter stop or something. And so we don't have to do that now?
We don't have to do that. It does happen by coincidence that this area is as close as you can get to our nearest station in Wilmington. So if we had to comply with that, this area actually would, but we actually don't have to comply with that anymore. We have to have the zoning district, but it does not have to be within any distance. They want us to choose somewhere suitable that makes sense. They want us to pick somewhere, you know... To have picked this as a large area with a lot of multi-family housing in it a long time ago does kind of, you know, speak to its suitability for that use, so...
And then my second question too is, again, when I last heard it, we could do an overlay?
Yes.
Is that what you're proposing that we do in that area? Or just change it altogether so that that remove, just a plain old by right? No permit, no overlay?
So there is already an overlay on that district. And I think the easiest thing, what I would recommend that we do is for that overlay district, which is called the Multi-Family Residential Overlay District, just remove the requirement that site plan review have a special permit. And we would need to come up with another set of site plan review requirements and regulations for that district only. That would be my recommendation. But we could do another overlay. Those properties are subject to a few overlays already, at least three of them. So I think we should try to change the provisions of the overlay that's already in.
That's existing, okay. All right.
Just specific to these sites. Is there any more acreages, acreage that is developable?
I think so, yeah. I think that there is.
Because the developers, as they came forward with their proposal, pretty much maximize their ability to take advantage of what they had for land. So... Well, is there more room?
There might be. I'm not really sure. And, you know, they have... It depends. I think it also depends if these properties are ever connected too soon or if they have to continue with their treatment plant the way, the plants the way they are. There are other factors that would go into whether these properties would be developable. But as of now, I mean, there really is nothing to stop Martins Landing or Edgewood from coming to us with a development proposal saying they want to expand their areas. They could. Even if the answer is no, there's absolutely nowhere left. We already know that there's capacity for at least 750 units there. So in my opinion, the way I'm interpreting this, we're already meeting what they say we need to meet. That doesn't mean that the CPC is not going to continue looking for other areas to develop and other opportunities for housing. But I think in the interest of meeting this particular mandate, I think that these properties will do that for us.
Well, again, I think the legislation as it was passed was a... I don't know how it went under the radar, but I think it caught communities like ours by surprise. And it doesn't appear as though it's as dire as we thought it was going to be, which is good. But again, I still have this nervous twitch developing that things can change. So, but so I thank you for your effort. I for one say, yeah, move forward.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
So I followed this pretty closely, and I sat in on the last Zoom meeting that they had, which it's just kind of changed. It did sound very dire in the beginning, but it's changed a lot. And basically, the start of the line for us on this one so far. So, yeah, I say go for it. We're lucky. We're lucking out on this one.
I think one of the reasons that we felt that we were all panicking a bit at the beginning is because they had not actually clarified that it doesn't matter if there's development on the property. Once they announced that, you know, cleared up a lot for us.
I remember the last time you were here, we were addressing the comment period, and you had written out a whole list of comments. I think when it first passed and they had that comment period, a number of communities did that. Many communities wrote in and said, you know, we already developed around our stations or our metro real or, you know, we've already had this multi-family housing area. You know, it's unfair to not allow us when we've already sort of gone along with your philosophy of providing that, you know, that we've already developed it, so it's unfair to make us pick vacant land, especially communities that don't have, like ours, that aren't like ours, that have open space to develop. But I remember that was one of the last things that we talked to you about. Obviously, I think the abundance of comments by communities that really had a similar complaint. Maybe that's what... Maybe they actually paid attention to that. But so in terms of what we need to do for you, we need to give you direction to take back to the CPC in terms of applying?
I think if there's a consensus that it's okay for the CPC to go ahead and submit that action plan that I provided the draft of, then we will go ahead and do that.
Let me just pull the members. Mr. O'Leary, you're on board. Mr. Walner?
I'm good.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Studo? You have your consensus unanimous. Great work.
Thank you.
Thanks to the CPC for starting this, spending a lot of time on this file.
Yes.
You're welcome. I certainly hope once we go through the whole process that we find that the news is as good as we believe it to be. So thank you.
Keep us posted, please.
I'm on it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Our next order of...
That brought gender tears.
All right, next order of business is public comment. Do we have anyone? Please, please, if you could come to the podium and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Adam Austin, live at 42 Main. My comment is regarding the upcoming sewer project or wastewater project. I know that a lot of things are changing and we won't be having the, the vote on December 5th as we expected. But on several occasions, I've asked for access to the data, uh, used to come up with some of the basic figures in the proposal. Uh, I know that we spent a lot of money, we spent a few million dollars or near that in, in having a study done. We haven't seen the, the study yet, it hasn't been published, I understand. But I have been told that I could access the data, that the public could access the data so that we could analyze the project. On four or five different occasions, I've asked for the data. I've been told to send email to the wastewater, the Public Works wastewater email address. I've sent that on, on several occasions and have not received a response. And I'd like some sort of an update on when the public can have access to the data, uh, related to the upcoming wastewater project.
I don't know if you have, Mr. Gilberto?
Sure.
I do, I do recall you've sent us emails as well, the board you've sent them, yes?
Um, so the short answer is we, we do have a wastewater working group meeting. It's not a public meeting, um, but it's a meeting with the staff, the planning staff and the finance staff tomorrow morning, where our intention is to discuss your most recent, uh, request. Um, I think, I think our concern is, again, as we've expressed to you, trying to balance the issue of the privacy that goes along with the individual water usage, um, in the context of a larger document. Um, there are public documents that relate to water usage that get asked for as part of a closing for a sale. But to have it centralized in one spot, being readily available, we'll try to figure out how to manage that. And I think that we've made some progress on it and I, I do expect that we'll be able to respond to you. Um, it probably won't be until the beginning part of next week. Uh, but I just, I do want, you know, we got your email. I know the board members all saw your email and we do have a meeting tomorrow morning where we will discuss this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Is the feasibility study completed, Mr. Gilberto?
It's not, there are back, there are backup documents, uh, that we have posted online, uh, mostly related to the work that FXM has done, um, trying to project out growth. Uh, but the very nature of the, the scope that our primary consultant Kleinfelder has engaged in is that they are working with us to get our feedback to ultimately finalize a report that would be basically ready to go to town meeting. And as we all know, we're not at that point in time right now. So, uh, we have improved, for those who are home and watching as well, Mr. Austin's brought up, you know, an important point. Um, we've added additional documents on the wastewater planning webpage since the last workshop was held three weeks ago, I guess it was at this point in time. Um, and included in that are some of the backup documents relative to development projections. So, uh, trying to project that out. Um, but in terms of a final report from our consultant, that won't occur until we know what plan is actually being brought forward for a town meeting.
It's going to require action of the board in order for Kleinfelder to complete it. You know, the determinations that this board makes in relation to the project as it was formed will allow them to finalize the report. So the decisions that we have to make are critical to the finalization of this, so it's a way down the road.
I think I might have misunderstood the request to be, and it's something that I'm, I'm being asked by a lot of people though. And I think a chunk of, when we did, when we looked at this before the town meeting and before the town voted to, you know, it, spend the $3 million to do this, a portion of that was going to be directed at, you know, the economic growth that might be yielded from this. So are you saying that there's other data points that they would need to fit, fit into that feasibility study?
Mr. Austin, I think he's specifically looking for is some of the assumptions that we're making in relation to, um, single family, gallons usage and the ratio to, for condos and business condos and, and other entities, how we give a common denominator, um, some of the factors, the minutia that go into those, that those data points, is I think what he's looking for, so he can back it into it too and verify that what he's saying is true, which is great. But again, as the town administrator pointed out, some of that data is in relation to private property owners and their water usage and specific things in which is not necessarily to pump the mean. So we're working through it. But it's more specific to, you know, what, how do we get to our assumptions, you know? We've come to, these are the assumptions we're making, back it up basically. And he's looking for the backup information to verify how, how we've done and how we've come to those conclusions.
Okay, I see.
But it's not so much the, the new growth and all that, that, that stuff's pretty much readily available in FXM.
Okay.
But it's the Kleinfelder stuff and the assumptions that we're using in our formulas that he's looking for.
Correct. Pretty much.
Sorry, this is usually a Q and A, but there is, so.
No, I appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's correct. I, I am interested in some of the minutia about some of the assumptions. Uh, I have seen the FXM reports that have been posted, that's very helpful and it's full of good information. But it certainly doesn't have all of the information that I'm looking for.
You're primarily looking for water usage information, I believe, and how it, how it apportions cost.
Yes, and, and really I'm looking for some more information. The, the FXM report shows that in all of the towns with, uh, sewerage, the value of condos is lowered, uh, in sewerage communities than communities that, that, uh, only have septic. And because of the fairness clause, I'm interested in exploring that a little bit more because it seems like our property value is going to go down due to sewerage, according to the FXM report. So, uh, I'm looking for a little bit more information about that as well.
Thank you. And to that point, what we're trying to do is get to a point where, when there's betterments are made on property owners, if they're, when they're made on property owners, you know, we have to, people can, can seek an abatement on it or question them. We need to be able to back it up. So we want to make sure that the data we're using, the assumptions we're making are correct and legitimate. And if what he's saying is true, so be it, you know? And the current data that we're using does not necessarily show that. So that's where, this is where we're pushing the pause button and say, listen, we've got to look at this a little more closely and make sure that the numbers can be justified and on appeal, make sure that they can be defended. But he's on time.
Okay.
I would just caution on how far we bring this conversation. It wasn't, it wasn't here and there's a lot of interested people. I'm just saying that we keep going here, we're going to get emails of, you guys talked about wastewater, never said so. So, no, I'm just, no, I'm just being really, I, I, and I appreciate the commentary, Mr. I hope you understand though that if this becomes a full-blown back and forth, we're going to get people saying, well, how come, I didn't know we were talking about wastewater. So I'm just, that, that's my only.
Hopefully the general public knows wastewater's been a topic of discussion for seven, eight, nine years at this point.
What we told.
A bit unavoidable.
When I started and we, we, we were joining, joining the agreement with the Andover, the discussion was on how are we going to usher, usher in sewer? That's years in the making, this isn't an overnight decision. And the board talks about it at every single meeting. And for those people that are joining us, there is public comment and this gentleman showed up in person to ask a question and he's also been emailing us. So we're going to talk about sewer, we have been talking about sewer. Whether sewer is printed on the agenda, it's a topic that we regularly discuss and have been discussing at least since 2015, probably before that. So this is not a new topic for us, it's not a thing that we just woke up on a whim and decided, let's put, let's put sewer in here. It's part of our agreement that we signed with the Andover. We talk about it a lot, we talk about trash and wastewater all of that time.
And Madam Chair, I only say that because, uh, I'd say 50% of the top complaints were transparency, that no one knew when we were going to talk about it, even though we publicized it. So we told the public at every single meeting and the last board meeting that we promised that if it becomes a larger discussion, everybody will know. So again, it's more of, I agree with you that it's always going to come up, but I just want to be sensitive to the fact that, um, we've been told over and over through email, Facebook, face-to-face, pigeon, you know, uh, however else, that it gets discussed and no one knew about it and I just don't want, that, that's why I'm, I think overly sensitive about having, going in too much to it without it being an agenda item. Because I guarantee you this will come up on Facebook tomorrow that it was discussed and no one knew about it.
I can understand where you're coming from, but we have actively, actively been talking about this, actively been studying this, actively been engaging experts on it, actively had teams of people working on this. It's actively been updated at every meeting, that's our job here. We're doing the work that we need to do for the community. And we have been studying this as you, like I said, since 2015 and probably before that. So it's not a new topic and I would never, we have public comment and I would never tell someone they can't discuss a topic because public comment varies wildly here about what people want to talk about and tell us about. And that's part of our job too. I understand where you're coming from, but we also have to do our job and let people address us during public comment and try to address, it's usually not an interactive, but it's such a, it is large now, this issue is large and we're trying to move it forward, so we, we should welcome that kind of an interaction.
Don't get me wrong, I just wanted.
Nobody watches our meetings, they're boring.
I just got two texts saying I didn't, you are just talking about.
Even the selfless.
No, no, I want to clarify though, no, the public comment is definitely needed, but,
Yes, yeah.
but again, I think we've made it very clear, we made it very clear at the last meeting that unless it's a public hearing on sewer, the back and forth will not happen. And that's what I'm just saying that we said that and now it's happening and, you know, like, there, there's going to be those that reference it, so I'm just.
Okay, I understand, I do understand, but it is.
I said it last minute.
We need to, we definitely need to move on, hopefully that addressed what you're concerned about. But we, we're not ignoring that and we want to get the answers for everybody, us included. And we do have the experts that the town voted to, uh, for to be hired to look into this. And we definitely want you and all of us to have that backup data like Mr. O'Leary explained. I thought it was, I thought it was taking a different track that I've been looking for too in terms of the economic development, but, and for anybody that is listening in, I don't know if anyone else has public comment, but I do see, I, is anyone else here that wants to speak in public comment? No, okay, Mr. Gilberto, any hands raised? All right.
I've seen any.
Okay, good, so we do, we do have to move on and, um, and, um, we have to go to our public hearing.
First of two.
Our public hearing is the next thing, 7:30 public hearing. If I could just read the notice. In accordance, this is in accordance with chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws, an in-person and virtual public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Monday, November 21st, 2022, in Room 14 Town Hall, 235 North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts. In-person and via virtual technology at 7:30 PM on the application of Mario's Restaurant, Wayama Group LLC, for a change in license type from a common victular wine and malt to a common victular all alcohol, to be exercised at 20G Main Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, in a one-story building approximately 1,200 square feet with kitchen, dining area and restaurants. Entrance exit doors located in the front and the rear of the building. The publication was 1110 2022 by the North Reading Select Board and it had the Zoom meeting access phone and dial by location with the local number link. So do we have our license, our applicant here? If you could please come to the, come to the, come to a microphone on the podium, wherever you're comfortable.
Doesn't matter.
All right, and if you could please introduce yourself and.
My name is Lomia Reyes, I am one of the owners of Mario's in North Reading.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, and could you just give us a little bit of what your application is? And we have it in the packet and if you could just give us a quick summary.
Yes, so we currently have the beer and wine license and we just want to change it to a full liquor license. So we would have a little bar and we would have about eight seats there. I will update that in a moment, obviously, and.
And, and any questions, Mr. Gilberto?
Just through you, Madam Chair, will there be a, a change or alteration of the premises? It's going to need to come before the board, meaning anything with regard to the layout of the restaurants? I know you don't, you don't have a bar right now, right? You serve alcohol from behind the counter.
Right, so we do have a counter.
Yes.
And then that's where the bar would be.
In that same area? Yeah, are you changing the number of seats in total in the restaurant?
No, no, we're just adding the bar stools where the bar that we have right now, the counter, has space for those bar stools.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, uh, okay, questions?
Lemoncello?
Yes. Of course.
Of course, this is a great idea.
That's what other menus.
How late are you going to stay on this? On Monday.
We talk too much here. We talk too much to make it anyway. Mr. Studo, any questions, Mr. Wallner? So where are you, are you going to leave the register where it is?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're just adding.
We're adding more stools, updating, you know, the big corner, a little bit, you know, the dining room.
Okay.
And putting some stools and doing a full bar behind the, uh, the counter.
A, a full bar, okay. So if there's, if there's any construction, I think that's what Mr. Gilberto is getting at. So construction plans, right, they have to be reviewed, right? If it's any kind of a change to the interior.
We may want to look at what your building plans are just to make sure there isn't any need for a change of premises.
Yeah.
Do you have, did you hire a contractor to do that work?
No, yeah.
Okay. Oh, so you haven't done permitting yet for it? Oh, I see, okay. All right.
Until we get the license.
Right.
This is for immediate, for the remainder of this year or just for June?
The remainder of this year and then moving forward.
Are you going to specifically have a bartender?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? So that, if it's the remainder of this year, it ends in the end of December?
Yeah.
Won't be much time.
And it's not even, if it's not even, so you're going to start, if, if this gets approved, you'd be, if it gets approved?
Then it'll be started in January first.
You'll be starting, oh, I see.
To renew.
Because we just renewed the beer and wine.
Right. Oh, so you're a little ahead of your, okay. All right.
Who still has to go through the ABCC?
That's right, yes, right.
I'm just harmed by the fact that you're here before us looking to expand your menu. You know, and your business is doing well, which is great to hear and see and appreciate your, uh, continued success, you know, so.
Money.
Nothing more than that, that's right.
Smart.
Okay. So shall we, do we have anything else, Mr. Gilberto?
So I think the point, I think the, the point that Mr. O'Leary made between the two is, there is a fee associated with this. It's a $250 application fee, it's not the full license fee. Um, they've actually been proactive, I believe you've already applied to renew.
Yes, we already did everything, yes.
So we may need to adjust that application, what's the ABCC takes action to approve presumably.
Of course, yes.
Uh, but they've actually applied to renew already for a beer and wine license.
But there's a different fee for both of those.
That's correct.
And if they, if they, if they get the license now, they have to pay the, it's not, it's not, uh, it's for the new license, so why?
But if it's going to operate, well, you're going to get the ABCC approval before the end of the year?
Yes.
Sixty, wow.
You think so?
But the license that we're renewing for next year anyways.
Right, right, no.
So it'll be a difference for next year.
Your, your application for renewal is for a beer and wine license?
Yes.
Not for a full alcohol?
So that we're going to have to. So that's going to have to change.
Definitely.
Yes, well, I would be for the difference, right?
Yeah, we don't want to double charge them, we're just looking to make sure that it's the right license.
I'm concerned about they're being hit for six weeks in 2022.
We don't intend to charge them, other than the $250 application.
Okay.
Because they want, they can't, they can't convert until they get the full approval.
Right, okay, that's, that's, by the time you get the ABCC approval and stuff like that, you've got two weeks left in the year, maybe if you're lucky.
Six weeks.
Right.
And.
And, and it may mean that we need to renew their licenses of beer and wine and then actually grant them the license.
You could always take a vote that it's to, to take effect pending ABCC on January 1st and then come back in. We can make that a part of our motion.
Sure.
So that we, we don't even have to worry about this, so you've got the renewal, you know that there's, what's the difference in fee?
I mean, 28 and 46? 28 and 46, I think? 20 to 46.
$1,800.
All right. All right, so I think everybody's on board here, so.
All the local.
Permitting.
Permitting.
They'll also have to do.
If you had doing any renovation, you know, you have to come back here with the plans and let us know. And it sounds like you're having a bartender and you're, it sounds like you're expanding your bar there.
Yes, some level of updates, yes, it was with wire construction, yes.
Yeah, so, so. That would have to come back too, but I think everybody's on board with giving you the green light, but I mean, we have to have a motion.
Yeah, right. Madam Chair, I'm going to approve the change of license type from a common victular wine involved to a common victular all alcohol. all alcohol from Mario's Restaurant, uh, Wayama Group LLC, twenty-three G Main Street, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I agree.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Great, get forward to it.
Good luck moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, our next order of business is a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three tax classification. I'm just gonna read the public hearing notice. Uh, property tax classification, the Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two at eight PM to determine the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, chapter forty, section fifty-six. This hearing is anticipated to be held in person in room fourteen of Town Hall located at two thirty-five North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, and via virtual technology as follows. The public hearing notification contains the Zoom links, uh, the internet access, the telephone, the mobile, the dial by location, meaning ID, and the Zoom link notification, and that's by the Select Board. Okay, good evening. We're joined by our assessor. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening to all of you. Tonight's our annual classification we hold every, this time every year. I would like to take a moment and recognize the staff in the assessing office for their hard work, dedication throughout the year, actually for the last three years. Um, two years, starting in twenty nineteen, we went through a complete data conversion, which I spoke about. And then right from the data conversion, we went right into a full revaluation. This year was just an interim valuation move, so we did our regular work on double duty, which gave us a chance to clean up our offices too. So with that being said, the interim adjustments of values were certified by the Bureau of Local Assessment to ensure the values are derived utilizing a methodology base of accepted mass appraisal practices and are supported with current market values as, as evidence and are uniformly and equitably applied to all properties. Personal property accounts are reviewed for appropriate listings, evaluation of assets along with the cost and depreciation schedule. So that just summarizes what an interim adjustment is. The statistics must conform to the commissioner's minimum standard for certification. The purpose is for measuring the level in uniformity of assessments before and after the interim revaluation. I'm happy to report that our values and our new growth were certified timely, actually a little early, on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The new growth certified at one million twenty-seven six forty-two. The estimate was eight fifty, but that's work in progress. We're estimating the eight fifty in the month of February and I don't finalize until October. For FY twenty-three, the average single family is seven hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars, up from six hundred and fifty-nine thousand one eighth. We brought on twelve new houses this year, which is not uncommon. We usually do bring ten to twelve. The values are up by thirteen point four percent this year. So that's just a quick overview of what's been going on in the assessing office. For tonight, your role is to vote on four decisions. Select a minimum residential factor, selection of an open space discount, granting of a residential exemption, or granting of a small commercial exemption. This is just a slide to show you where our levies on. Uh, starting from two thousand and eighteen, uh, you can see it was forty-nine, forty-nine million seven seventy. Today's levy for fiscal twenty-three is fifty-nine million four hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-three. So it, it is escalating, but at a cautious speed. What is a split tax rate? A split tax rate allows a community to increase the commercial, industrial and personal property share of the tax levy up to fifty percent more than the residential. You're not raising any additional taxes. You are only shifting the burden. The tax rate in North Reading was split in the years nineteen eighty-five and nineteen eighty-eight. Just for a little history. This slide is just what we have on our inventory today. Um, with, we have four thousand three hundred and ten single families. Our condos, as we know, are increasing by fifty units a year. So we're up to nine fifty-seven on those, forty-one on multifamilies, twenty-five on mixed-use properties. That can be a commercial and an apartment. Uh, let's see, commercial properties, we have two hundred and twenty-five, industrial properties, we have eighty-five. Personal property, we have five hundred and thirty-one accounts. Now on to our votes. For the open space discount, we do not have any classified open space. All of our large tracts of land are accounted for in on the tax rolls. We have two chapter properties of their sixty-one A, so they are being taxed. So for this vote, we do not have any that would qualify for an open space discount. The residential exemption. The residential exemption, this was actually created in communities on the South Shore. For people that did not live in that house as their domicile twelve months out of the year. They vacationed, second homes. So you do have the option of adding a twenty percent shift in the residential class. I wanna explain this and we'll see it on a slide further down. When you shift that twenty percent, you're shifting from our lower-end value homes, the twenty percent across the board to the higher-end homes. That's how that works. Again, we're not raising any more levy. We're not raising any more taxes. We're taking the same amount of tax and we're shifting it. That's all we're doing. So on this next slide, you can-
I'm sorry, just let me ask you a quick question then. So a residential exemption doesn't go to everybody that is a resident?
No, it doesn't. So what it would do is you have this minimum value home and that, your middle value home, those would receive the exemption and the amount of the tax levy that they're saving gets shifted to the higher-end homes.
So those homes taxed would go on?
Exactly, which is why the whole purpose of this residential exemption was created. Because you take people in Barnstable, people in vacation areas, right? They don't live there year-round. That's their second home. So the people that did live there year-round had usually not the higher-end homes, they had the average homes. So that was the purpose in this creation of the residential exemption.
How do you determine what's lower and higher end? Is it that seven forty-five, anything under and then anything above?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
So here on this slide, and I'm not gonna read these numbers unless you want me to, but it's just showing you how it shifts from the average single family reduces the tax on the lower-end homes, everything below, by eight hundred and eleven dollars and forty-two cents. But it's raising it on the other side. And I did, um, a fifteen percent and then I did a twenty percent just to give you an idea of up to, well, the five percent increase. Do we have any questions on that?
Did you do, uh, did you do an itemization of how many homes would be, would be, would benefit from this and how many homes would increase? You know, there's how many, how much of our housing stock would fall under that seven forty-five and how much is that or above?
I did actually run that report, but I didn't include it in here and I don't wanna give you a number, but I can't remember off the top of my head and forgive me for that because I did run the report.
No, I'm just curious.
I must've got sidetracked.
Okay.
I know it wasn't, it wasn't me.
Under seven forty-five, is that what you're saying?
So seven forty-five, three nineteen is your average single family home for fiscal twenty-three.
So it would be anything under that would get the exemption?
Exactly.
And anything over that would pay more?
The additional, yep.
I'm just curious if it's, you know-
How many?
Ten percent of our housing stock is under that or fifty percent or?
Probably mostly condos.
I can tell you, one of the reports that I, when I was running these reports to just see where it fell, I did five hundred thousand, houses under five hundred thousand. I had seventeen, seventeen, twenty, twenty.
Single family?
Single family.
How many?
Twenty.
They're assessed under five hundred thousand?
Were those houses or condos?
Houses. I don't, it, so if we're, for this purpose, you want, you're only dealing with the residential housing stock? You're not dealing with the condos.
Oh.
Those, those are a whole separate, I'm, yeah, there's not, there's not many. That I can tell you.
I mean, to me, I think in most of our minds, you would think, oh, if it's gonna help the older, the seniors, you know? But that's not necessarily who's living in those houses.
That's-
It could be a single bachelor who's got plenty of money, just chose to live in a smaller hole, you know, I mean?
So for the qualifications, you do have to go through the town clerk's office. You do have to verify that they are in there, that they domiciled that property. You do have to deal, you know, check with town clerks to make sure they're on voter registration. I, in some cases, they're not here six months out of the year either.
Yeah.
You know, they're in Florida for six months and years.
Right, right.
So there's, there's a lot of legs that you will that go into this decision as to whether you-
So those numbers really can't be firm, unless you would know exactly how many or?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right. If, if there was an entertainment for the board that you wanted to put ten percent or twenty percent, at that time, we would have to-
You'd have to firm it up.
Go and confirm it, everything.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Just a-
Mr. Wallner?
And it would graduate, so like if someone was just one percent below, it would be pushing one percent up on the other side. So these would be the maximums that you can pick in extreme situations, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the residential?
Well, it doesn't have to be ten percent, fifty-five percent.
Oh, right, I, I mean, I wasn't gonna do the scenario, well, by increments of-
Yeah, yeah, no.
One percent or whatever. So the small commercial exemption, this works very similar to the residential exemption except for DUA, which is the Department of Unemployment Assistance, sends assessing offices a list of businesses that would have to qualify through here. The value has to be less than a million dollars and they have to employ fewer than ten people. We have sixty-seven businesses out of our three hundred and ten businesses in town that possibly would qualify.
So shifts the percentage to the businesses that are valued over the million?
Over the million, right. It's the same methodology as the residential exemption, yeah.
Mr., Mr. Studo?
I'm, I'm just curious. How is, how's the business value? Cause business valuation can be expensive just to get to that. I mean, it's, what, you know, like is this goodwill, does it, like? So I, I-
Right.
I feel like in practice, this would just be a nightmare.
Um, a hundred percent would be. One hundred and ten percent, actually, no pun intended. Um, it would be a lot and then we still would have to verify with the DUA on a specific date that there were fewer than ten employees. And then we, you know, you set it up in units so that it reduces the ten percent on the lower end and shifts the ten percent to the higher end.
That's it?
Are there any other questions on the commercial tax issue?
I wanna, I wanna ask, but I'm afraid to because of Mr. Studo. Let's say, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask it though. Let's say, um, that the sewer project, for example. I'm sorry, but I'm gonna do it.
Gonna talk about it.
While we're talking about this, cause I just wanna understand the mechanics. Let's say the town says yes to that sewer project. Yes, there's a, there's a shift of taxes, an additional tax that, all the parcels, residential and commercial. And let's say the board basically adopts this. So that extra percentage is also gonna be subject to the reduction that ten, if we, if we said yes to this. So that extra percentage that would be tacked on, that's gonna be part of, of ten percent reduction that then gets shifted over to those other businesses.
To the higher, to the higher value businesses.
Okay.
It would shift over to there. It's funny you're saying that, Kate, cause I thought about it when I was putting this in.
Yeah, of course you, yes, you, you, you've been fielding all of those questions, yeah. So, and that would be the same, let's say if we did the residential, even though it's maybe twenty homes that there, any of those are located on the, well, any of those actually. The extra amount of the taxes would go on to the other, other ones, okay?
But now that you mention it, Madam Chair, if we did get that growth, I think it would be a lot cleaner to just do a split tax rate at that point, which is, by the way, what the end result is, it takes a while, you know, to get solved.
I agree.
Right.
That's maybe a good idea.
And it, if you think about that too, it would, in my opinion, it's only my- And it, if you think about that too, it would, in my opinion, it's only my opinion, if the town ever gets to that point of a split tax rate, it's even across the board. This year, I mean, what if, what if people didn't report to the DUA accurately?
We have 200 contractors in town.
What if they said their business was only worth, you know, $989,000? God bless you. You know, the, the split tax rate is even.
It's cleaner.
It's definitely wide, to be honest with you. But that's just my opinion.
Madam Chair, if I might just, just before we move forward, and normally I do this before the presentation is made, just for full disclosure purposes, I just wanted to disclose that I have family members who live in town and own both commercially and residential properties in the community, real estate in the community. But we're, the Board of Assessors are recommending to the board a single tax rate rather than a split tax rate. It would not pose a conflict. If a split tax rate were proposed, I would be recusing myself. But since it's not being proposed, I feel a liberty to participate.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. So since a single tax rate is being proposed, maybe we could move this along quickly?
Maybe we could.
All right.
All right, I'm moving it, moving it fast.
It's our, it's our fault, you're, you know.
Yes.
But these are things that you think about and these are things people ask you to run these numbers, so.
And there's people watching that might be wondering those things, yeah.
Well, one of the important things to recognize by my Madam Chair is that we're, right now, the commercial industrial tax base is shrinking. It's actually shrinking, you know, which is contrary to what our goals have been in order to try and grant residential taxpayers some, some tax relief. So as we're moving forward here, you know, unless there's some substantive changes according to the plans here, which really means sewage, you're not going to see any dramatic change or shift in the residential split. And if that being the case, if the city is okay with that, then this is what you're going to get.
Right.
You're not even going to approach the possibility of even talking about a split tax rate and having it work. So as we're seeing now over the last couple of years, we see the actual commercial industrial personal property tax portion shrinking in the residential portion of the tax burden, actually, actually growing for the residential taxpayers. So as we move forward with other subject matters, such as sewage, it's something to be considered. This is what we've been talking about all along, we've talked about every year. As we move forward, if we're looking to actually get to a point where we can consider a split tax rate, I'd have to recuse myself. We're not going to see it unless we allow for some new growth areas, new growth has to come in the commercial industrial.
And we, we see, we see this, I hope you're right that people are watching because we see this every year and these are the things that keep us concerned and worried about the fiscal direction of the town. We see these numbers every year. We have this public hearing every year and we see these, what we're seeing and.
And what we're seeing is, as the assessor pointed out, is we've seen 12 new single-family homes.
Static.
Our, our new growth is based upon, you know, 12 new single-family homes in Poli.
Trimount.
You know, as far as the new growth.
Lots of pools, a lot of pools.
Yeah, a lot of pools, a lot of pools. But I'm just saying, as far as, you know, we're not seeing, we're not seeing in the commercial.
No commercial business.
We're not seeing in the commercial area.
That's the problem, that's the thing.
You know, more of the tax burdens being, being paid for by residential property companies.
That's the thing. Mr., Mr. Studo.
We've talked about this in the past. However, to effectively have a split tax rate, how much of that yellow needs to go away?
Excuse me. So not to outdate myself with how long I need to do an assessment. I don't want to do that.
This is workout world, no jargon.
But I can tell you, back to 1988, it would be a 70-30 split. I still kind of roll by the rule of thumb because in a bedroom community like we are, it's a good ratio mix. If you have 30% in this pie for your commercial, industrial, and personal property values, you've got a good tax base at that point. And you don't have to shift all the way up to the, to the maximum, which right now would be 50, 1.50. You wouldn't have to do that. You could do the split in phases. You could do 1.10 the first year, see how that's rolling, are we maintaining our commercial, industrial, personal property values? Or are we losing business? Because you don't want to get to that point. So if, if you look at that 30% and, and again, that's just my opinion. It's a good ratio for a community of this type in size.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We just don't want that static and that's what we're, we're saying.
Static and shrinking.
Shrinking.
We're shrinking.
Yeah, I remember, being 8218, not too long ago.
I change this pie every year.
It's going to be 90 next year.
Oh, easy, easy.
Yellow.
I've already ran some numbers.
We're going to be doing the meeting with flashlights because we can't turn the lights on.
Maybe if it goes to 90, maybe, maybe you can pick one better than yellow, something nice like a blue.
All right.
Great, you picked the color. You picked the color in.
All right.
Okay, so we'll get back to the classification part. So the Select Board may shift the town's tax burden from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes, as long as the shift does not exceed the minimum residential factor. The minimum residential factor right now is 88.9, as that pie shows. This means that no more than 11.71% of the residential class burden can be shifted to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. The following pages contain information on the impact of any shift of the tax burden. At this time, the Board of Assessors is recommending for the fiscal 2023, a factor of one or a single tax rate. And this slide, and I know it's, there's so many numbers and there's just no way to make it any clearer for the public. I wish I could. So in this, in this scenario, you can see the residential value. We're at $3,750,844.1. So being at the 88.31%, the proposed tax rate for fiscal '23 is $1399. If you were to shift the rate by 10%, it would reduce the residential down to $12.5, $12.59. And you can see up to the maximum shift of 1.50 would reduce the rate down to 7. Now, on the other side, the commercial rate would increase at the maximum shift of 1.5 to $20.99. And that would carry through for industrial and personal property. So commercial, industrial, and personal property are the same rate. We don't have different rates. Are there any questions on this page?
No questions, right?
So this, this page is in here just to show you, from 2019, our tax rate was $1558. The lower-valued house was $337.9. The average was $578,307. And the high was $1,117,900. Roll that forward to today for fiscal '23. Our lower-valued house is the $580. And our highest house is over $2 million. It's $2 million already actually. So you can see that that's our shift in the residential class. For commercial, in 2019, our lower-valued commercial industrial property was $889,100. And the high was $1,321.7. 2023, we're at $800,000 for a low-end commercial property and $24,000 for the high. And that, I just put that in there just so that you can see, you know, where the values are going and how the averages are increasing. I mean, if you look at our levy and look at how the values are steadily increasing, you know, by 15,000 to 20,000 a year, it, it all makes sense. We're heading in the right direction. We're just all on the residential side. Any questions on this page?
How are we heading in the right direction?
No, 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 meaning the levy. But it's all on the residential.
Well, again, it's just important to note that, you know, three years ago, four years ago, the average residential family taxes on the average home was $9,000. It's now $10,400. You know, the only thing's changed is what the market value of the, of the homes are. The homes are the same, it's just that the market value and, and as the ratio has shrunk with the commercial industrial, more shifts to the residential and paying $1,400 more over a three-year period, four-year period.
Does anyone have any questions?
Well, we're heading in the right direction. It's, it's, you know, this is what people are saying and we're all experiencing because we're all taxpayers here. It's a, that's a substantial increase just based upon market valuations. You know, cost of business isn't going down. And that's based upon, this is taxing to the max too, right? The prop two and a half plus new growth. Yeah, so it's, so in order to maintain our level of services, this is what we have to do. Unless we can buy some new growth, the burden's still going to be picked up by the residential single-family home, homeowners.
Okay, so are we, so we're doing some, we're going to be taking some vote. The recommendation is single tax rate. What was your recommendation on, I'm assuming it was, did you, do you make a recommendation on the exemptions? I'm assuming it's a no on those.
The Board of Assessors has never made a recommendation on those.
But, but the single tax rate is, is, does anyone have any more questions on that before we take it to the vote? No? Any discussion? Pretty clear, right? So should we, can we call for a vote?
I started walking through. Okay, Madam Chair, I move to select a minimum residential factor of 1.0 as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Wait a minute, is this, this is a public hearing, I'm sorry. I totally forgot. I, I just realized it. I didn't take any public comment on, on these Mario's either. Is anyone here that wishes to speak on the Mario's application?
I think they were here and left with them.
Hearing none?
I think they were happy.
Is anyone here or joining us online that wishes to speak about this in public comment, about the tax classification or any of the recommended, or the recommendation of the assessor? Hearing none and seeing none will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And now we'll go to the vote, which is a, which, Mr. Wallner made the motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to not, okay, so I move to not establish a residential exemption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to not to establish a commercial exemption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend the fiscal 2023 property tax levy at $59,431,101.94, which is $6,461.06 less than the levy limit.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend to the Board of Assessors that fiscal year 2023 proposed tax rate be set at $1399 per $1,000 valuation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
So we have an open space?
We didn't do the open space, I'm waiting.
We're waiting, okay.
We don't even.
Do you have a motion on that? We don't even have any property that we're here to, we don't have property that would be applicable to, right? So we'd assume it'd be a motion not to recommend that.
Yeah, unfortunately, you still have to take that vote on the hearing as of now.
That would.
Okay.
Do we, do we have a motion?
Make it up?
Do we have a motion not to recommend?
Not to establish?
Not to establish?
An open space exemption.
Rich, you can use the same one as the residential exemption, just with open space. It's the same thing.
Madam Chair, I move to not establish an open space exemption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. That was very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're picking your brain about a lot of this stuff. So we appreciate that you're able to help us out, help us through this.
Not a problem. That's what I'm here for.
All right.
Because it made sense.
Okay, so we're going to thank you again and we're going to move on to our next order of business, which is a transportation committee and a vote to establish that. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Good night. All right, we'll, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have a draft of a transportation committee. I guess I'll call it a charge, if you will. And you see that there's a listing there that's been developed, I believe, in conjunction with Mr. Wallner and with Ms. Hartman and some discussion. I think there were a couple of areas where we sort of struggled a little bit. One being, where is the appropriate representation of the different subject matter areas? Is it best to have, you know, representatives of the different committees that we have? So for example, Veteran Services or Elder Services. I think that the Director of Public Services intention is to have the staff be involved in the discussion. But I think that that was sort of a question that we had. I know there was some comment about the appointing authority too in the last discussion we had as well. Someone suggested perhaps I ought to be the appointing authority. My recommendation to the Board is that we have, if we're going to have a committee that's set up as a sort of a public body, if you will, that it be representatives of existing committees rather than staff and that the staff help under Ms. Hartman's direction. And that it be appointed by the Select Board. I can tell you, I've already asked Lillian on her first day to help us with transportation. Mr. Wallner knows that. So I think, you know, the staff kind of knows the charge. But, you know, obviously, it's the Board's decision about how it wants to proceed. So I'm going to stop there. I don't know if Rich or Lillian have anything they want to add.
As the motion, draft motion reads now, it says, consideration for appointing. consideration for appointing folks who might represent the interests of veterans, who might represent the interests of elderly, might represent the interests of people with disabilities. I like the openness of that language because if a particular committee doesn't have someone who's passionate about transportation, who will really attend the meetings, and a citizen volunteer is willing to step up and say, I have a disability, I'm not on that commission, but can I be on transportation? That gives you the most flexibility to still appoint a committee member or a different person in public.
Okay. That makes sense too because of the fact that we have, already have a lot of committees and commissions and we have some interest, but it's hard to get volunteers. We talked about having a volunteer committee at our strategic plan, just to generate some excitement about serving. So it does kind of make sense that, you know, where someone stepped up to volunteer on one committee, they may not necessarily want to serve on another one just because they run that committee. So if we have that broad ability, I think that's a great idea. I believe Mr. O'Leary wanted it to be the, just something out of our hands and let the TA appoint. But if it's gonna be a committee that we establish, I would, I would tend to agree that we should be doing the appointing, but we should do it the way we're doing it by getting a recommendation. Maybe we just appoint through the recommendation of, you know, public services directors or TA, do it like that. All right, so do we have a motion? Do we have further discussion? Let's hear from our, our colleagues on this. Mr. Gilberto, I saw you had your hand raised.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna dominate the conversation because a lot of work has gone into it, but I do want folks to know that, you know, this is, has been and will continue to be a priority, priority regardless of any, you know, discussion on a, on a committee. I don't want folks to think that I or Ms. Hartman or anybody else don't take seriously the issues, for sure. But, you know, we certainly do, but whatever, whatever the board's pleasure, certainly we'll work.
We don't, we don't, I, I, I don't, I'm not gonna speak for my colleagues, but we know this is important to you. We also know all of the other things you're juggling right now. And we, we appreciate your jumping right in and getting right on board with this. So I don't know who's think, don't think that we think you don't take it seriously.
I don't, like.
Because we know you do.
Thank you.
Anyway. Mama mia, all right, Mr. O'Leary, on top of everything else, you know, where's the MBTA, Michael? I mean, really, we, we know this is a tough one.
Well, with this committee, we're gonna, we're gonna stomp and tap with this committee.
We've been talking about this. Look back to how many years this has been on our strategic plan, believe me, but we appreciate about.
Well, we could've had seven acres, it would've been a nice little.
All right. We could've made it a bust depot.
Why not? Could've done a lot of things.
Let's go. Not, I, it's not, not everybody always shares the vision.
Could've, would've, could've.
All right.
We had the majority sharing a vision, we didn't have two thirds.
I know, that's true, that's true. We went, we, we did, we worked hard on that, but there was a different, difference of opinion on that. Mr. O'Leary, did you have your hand raised?
No.
Mr. Wallner, you wanted to participate in this discussion?
I'll just say that the write-up is great, I, I like all the write-up and everything else like that. Just, you know, when the, it's basically, it's your people, it's your department, it's your, I mean, everybody who's involved in the board's team, so, you know, when it says on an as-needed basis, you're gonna be directed from the very beginning, you know, on a routine basis, you know. Select board members come and go, this is largely gonna be on you, however we write it. And so if the met, if the approach doesn't work, we change, you know, but largely, our success would be based on how it's set up, so I'm glad we have a transportation board.
Great. Again, I just wanna concur, I think it's critical that it, it lives well beyond the term of anybody sitting here.
Right.
It'd be an ongoing committee that's gonna be.
Amen to that.
Assessing and. I'll be good.
Yeah, I mean, at first, yeah, the biggest thing seniors have told us, Kevin, Kevin and I were in that, Kevin Zelli and I were at that, that summit, the two biggest things that the seniors, seventy-five people who showed up, it was property taxes and it was transportation. And that's always been the biggest thing, and that showed up in our survey a year and a half, two years ago. Same thing, so it's very important. And it's good that we have it all in one place as opposed to spread out here, spread out there. Needs to be centralized, and the write-up is quick, so maybe those objectives will be a huge success for the board.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yeah, it's critical, we, it's critical. Very necessary in town, but my one concern is it says seven voting members. Are you concerned with getting seven voting members to, that's a big quorum.
I think, yeah.
I mean, it's, I, I'm on, we are all on a lot of committees and that can be challenging.
Let me ask, in the, in your opinion, can five do just more because of that? Meaning, I'm also more concerned, not just to get, we want the qualified people on it, but more that, the more opinions, the more bureaucracy, the slower things move. I mean, that just, I, I haven't seen a seven.
Yeah, it's, it's big.
Five's already sometimes, like, you know, we'll talk about something in the executive session here a hundred times before, you know, it makes a decision. So with seven, my concern is that a great idea becomes just, you know, just all, again, just not making assumptions, just being reality.
My suggestion would be, if, if I could throw it out at you, to maybe have five and maybe two non-voting? I mean, if you still wanted to have seven, you know, I see that you have it itemized into who you want there, but two could be non-voting, so that you have that quorum easily, more easily to have.
That's, that's fine with me.
Yeah, the other thing too is, if you go, if you start with five, we can always expand it to seven.
Correct.
And we can shrink it too, but we can shrink it also, but, you know, we want you, we want you to be able to succeed from the, from the get-go. And again, all the people that you're talking about having participate here have other allegiances and responsibilities too, so it's.
You know, and we all know how challenging that can be. You know, you get a meeting together and you don't get your quorum, and you can't vote on anything.
Just hard to get volunteers.
Yeah.
Even, it, it might not seem, seem like that if it's maybe something that just means once a month or something, but it really, it rarely has to get volunteers, even for something like that.
That would just be my only suggestion.
So.
If you want to start with something, you can start with seven.
Well, I'm coming up, I'm just looking at the back page here, two members, so I'm counting five volunteers plus a select board liaison, plus a C E C liaison. Who will be voting? So is that the seven?
It says seven voting members. Like, the liaison doesn't necessarily have to vote via voting.
Yeah, I'm just trying to follow what it says, because it's, it's looking for five town volunteers.
No, but it, it says the seven voting members, it says select board member and the community planning commission member.
I'm using both.
It says a po, seven voting members.
Yeah.
Two, two, one, 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 that's seven. So you're, Mr. Wallner, that's, they're, the, the select board member and the community planning commission would be a voting member.
Yeah.
And we do sometime, we do have some committees where we vote.
And some we don't.
Some are, there's a voting member on E D C, there's a voting, there's voting members on.
There's a voting and a non-voting.
Right, right, so.
The problem I see.
So in other words, you mean it's only five volunteers?
Real doing the work.
Right.
Because I don't think you can expect the select board to do a tremendous amount of work, and I don't think we have the C P C to do a tremendous amount of work considering through other duties already going on.
Right.
So you really have five people who are gonna be trying to hit the majority of the.
So there you are, I, I, I mean, I think, I suggest would be to.
If you go down to three.
Three voting, three voting members? No, I, I was thinking five, but.
Well, just take, take out the two that are voting members and just make it a committee of five with a liaison from select board.
Correct.
And a liaison from C P C.
There you go.
And the lia, those, that, it keeps you your five members, which is kind of the intent of it, but you take out the voting ability, that way they're not, you know.
So that we're present, we report back, we're involved, but we're not, we don't have to be there.
And again, those liaison assignments change from year to year. They can't change from year to year, so if you're looking for continuity, you're not always gonna get it from here.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
We try, we try, we try to keep people, but, okay, so can we, should we, Mr. O'Leary?
No, I wanna say, I, I think it's a great idea, just because I feel that we don't think twice about how easy it is to get a ride through an app or whatever, you know, in general. But I think that for older population, I mean, I mean, not even, some, just in general, let's just keep it that it can be, it can be hard to get around, right? Even with, granted, if you have some type of disability with a handicap, but even then, it's not, it just the in and out if you have to run multiple things, so, you know, I think it's important. Also, like everything else, all the, all conversations lead to sewer, everyone, we have sewer and we open all these places, we're gonna need more shuttle services to get people all these places, which actually, that's a reality for towns that have multiple things. So, no, I think, and I was surprised at how, not how little, like, I didn't expect it, but it just, again, I grew up in Malden where it was like, you saw the, you saw it everywhere, it was just, you know, people getting, you know, rides, maybe I'm just like looking at the wrong thing. So I was just surprised here when it was like not as big. But I know I'm not comparing apple to apple, so just wanna say it's a good idea.
To help people age in place.
So what do we have, about five with the liaisons?
I think that's a good suggestion. I don't.
Five voting plus two liaisons who attend when available.
Correct.
Are you good with that?
I'm, I'm happy with that.
I think that would be more successful.
And associate members, I think, are already listed as a possibility, so anyone who wants to volunteer to help us learn about transportation on cable TV, love to meet you.
Right.
The only suggestion I would say on that is, don't have it be a three-year term, just be it a one-year term, and that way if someone moves out of the voting, maybe you can put the associate member in. Sometimes we see someone volunteer, we see that a lot of this where someone volunteers and then they resign, it's maybe not what they wanted. So you wanna have the ability to move that person in. That, that'd be my other suggestion, but I think it's fine. We make those changes, are we voting on this?
Yes.
With those, with the amendment to just, the C P C and the select board would be liaisons, and they'd be five voting members.
Yeah. All right.
Your board's on the agenda.
I'm attending.
The motion that currently says votes and that's written to you.
And you're looking for, Madam Chair, for the board to make these appointments? I'm just looking, to me, from a facilitating standpoint, if the administration can do it more quickly, not based on the time schedule, the meeting schedule, or anything else, and if they have associate members, they can just be elevated and can be reported to us. But, and that's why, the genesis of my comments earlier, you know, earlier meeting was, we could, someone within the administration is gonna be heading this up, doing the recruiting and facilitating the discussion and the action plan. Why let our meetings be an impediment to it and unhandle it and take their recommendations?
Mr. Gilberto?
So I think based on the description of the general representation of somebody representing a category, not necessarily being from a committee or being a staffer, I think we can make that work, you know, from my end. That's the board's preference.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm fine either way. But to me, it's, you know, we're, it's almost easier to re, for, for the administration to recruit than for us to recruit, even though they're doing it for us and we're putting out the, the notices and, you know, let us know if you wanna volunteer, and then as liaisons, we're getting these little notices and things like that. Just keep it moving.
Yeah, yeah, gets dragged down.
Because people like me, they tend to procrastinate on things.
Yeah.
I'm an impediment sometimes, you know. Don't make me liaison, just don't make me the liaison.
If it's up to me, I already know the liaison. I, I think it should just stay with us.
Okay, I'm fine.
I do, I think it should just stay as it is with us. And certainly, we would wanna have some input from our director and our TA, or the other boards and commissions that wanna have a member serving on it, that we have reciprocity with, because they're already in the fight, doing the work, doing the volunteering, handling the issues, you know. But I think we are, we typically do appoint these, so I think it should just stay with us and we just, that was gonna be my one, my vote member announcements, was we're coming up on renewal season and reappointment season and appointment season, but anyway, that's the net, not this topic. Let's just keep it with us and see how it works out.
Fine either way, but.
Just so we move it, let's get this moving. No pun intended. All right, get the bus rolling here.
Madam Chair, I move to establish a transportation committee as outlined by the attached document.
That as amended by.
As amended.
As amended.
Just as amended.
As amended.
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for this. Next, next order of business is the, is the energy conservation committee, discuss re-establishing the committee. Thank you.
Then there's one. We love having somebody here, so we're not talking to ourselves.
I know. Okay, so we have a draft in our, first draft in our packet of a proposal to reinvent and revive the current energy conservation committee. Who's sitting on that?
One twenty-two.
Liaisons, yeah.
No, I mean, how many committee members?
Oh, I don't know.
Who's volunteering for that one?
Well, we're not, we're just trying to be dealing with the issue.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on that? Last call.
So this hasn't been meeting, I mean, that I know of.
It's had, it's had, it's been dormant.
It's been dormant.
Yeah.
Eight years, at least.
Okay, so that's good, because I haven't been going to meetings.
This would be, this would be starting from the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Establishing it, basically.
Okay, any, any other comments?
It's just, it's just.
Get it going.
It's basically, there's, there's money out there for us, if you look on the second page. You know, it, it, it sounds like when they presented to us a very reasonable, they, they appear to be reasonable to work with, you know, people are in other towns, you know, it's not huge money, but they're getting some money over the years, and you just have to make a reasonable effort to try to make your town facilities and everything more energy efficient. That's the biggest attractive feature, that's that D O E R thing. Many towns have already done it, two hundred eighty out of three hundred fifty-one towns. So again, we're not leading the way, but we can certainly jump on board with what's going on. So that would be one of the major objectives, is just to organize that, just to have a place for these kind of efforts to land, for them to find, to finding opportunities. The second one is like our M L D, they'd like to work with us to do the B B chargers, there's no one to even contact where to do that, so we haven't given them a landing place to be able to come to us and get that done. So that would be something we could do. And then the future bylaws, we should be thinking of, like, when we do, like, you know, the pulti property or something like that, we should actually be saying, just like we say, we need to have ten percent affordable housing, we also need to have some B B chargers there, so that's the future. And right now, we haven't done that, so that should get, you know, some of our C P C policies and things that we ask people to do when they come to town, and this would be a good place for us to work out this kind of issues, so I think it's a, I think it's a good opportunity for us to do it.
Okay. Do we have a, a vote on that, or just?
You know, it's just, this is the first time we've had a chance to think about this, this is kind of more concept that we could.
Getting it up and running again and soliciting volunteers for that?
Well, just, if, I mean, we didn't do a vote, but I mean, if this is good the way it is, we can certainly go with it, and then the stakeholders are down the road, you know, the justice stakeholders are down the road. We can modify, and if we wanna get it going right away, we can, I have, I don't know if this would change much from what it is right now. So they did a nice job of taking the transportation proposal, concept we've done before, and she put it into good words, you know, maybe somebody would wanna take this to the next level and, you know, put it in the words, whatever the board thinks about that. The important thing is that we go with the news, that's it. You know, maybe somebody would wanna take this to the next level and, you know, put it in the words, whatever the board thinks about that. The important thing is that we go with the purpose, that's it. And, and write out Leanne's, you know, the liaison, so she would have the primary responsibility.
I definitely think, uh, our building commissioner could be, play a role in this, but I'm cautious to identify our employees and directors or officials on these committees. Because they're, you know, they need some downtime too. And these are not always, you know, these are some night meetings and other types of things. I can understand that they didn't want their inputs, but I, I would think the building commissioner is kind of a, a key one for these types of. Focuses, I guess you could say.
We've got the building commissioner inspected, but we also have someone in charge of our buildings.
Building superintendent.
Building superintendent, I think would be the first place to start.
This isn't just for us, though. This is just for the whole.
No, I understand. No, I, I, I think this whole charger, this whole electric charger, vehicle charging system thing, I, I think the town should get in the business, quite, quite frankly. But it's that, uh, taking more initiative to take advantage of these things and take control of it. Uh, and maybe even get some revenue out of it. But that's a future discussion.
Yeah.
With a group like this.
Yeah.
Uh, but we should at least start with our own buildings and then what we can do as a community to also assist. Move forward.
Okay, so do we wanna more for, formalize this in terms of what is the current makeup? I know it's dormant, but do you have any information about what the, what the makeup of the committee is?
Um, I, I don't, but my recollection, when I saw a, a charge for it, going back a number of years, was that it was a similar membership with some citizen involvement as well. So, folks representing school facilities, representing municipal facilities, and then also, you know, the public at large sort of helping out.
Is there, is there a reason why it's to be determined, though, if it's just a dormant committee, there must be all, can you find out for us from the city, the town?
I can, yeah. I, I'm sure that there's a.
Right.
The last appointments.
When we dug in, it was pretty big. It was an ad hoc committee. We put together for a very specific purpose and then it kind of just went away.
What was the purpose?
I think it was part of the school design, right?
Well, I thought, no, it was also predated that, I think, yeah.
Like lights and everything?
Lights.
Oh, okay.
Well, mostly lights is what happened, a lot of the ballots, not in this room, but in other rooms. That was a big, a big thing that was suc- successful. There was a lot that took place.
When they converted to LED?
Um, to compact fluorescent for the most part, yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so, so what we, what technology will we move to is now obsolete. We should be moving forward to something else.
All right.
It was a big undertaking and it was a very successful program as it evolved. And then it was completed and just dormant, didn't move along with the times.
This is definitely behind if we don't, we don't have this, it's really behind. I mean, but, okay, so that's.
And I think there would be high interest from the town, actually. A lot of people really wanna get out of this. You know, it would be surprising if we don't get a lot of people who wanna do this.
Okay, so are we, what, would our next step be messaging?
Again, it takes an investment in buying these. I think we have some money hanging around to do it. More time expenditure monies for it.
Oh, from the, the, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Which we have to spend by twenty, twenty.
Well, I know, but I mean, these types of initiatives certainly fall to a, either the category of, you know, non-recurring expenses that you want to, to have a long, less the positive effect on things, so.
All right, so do we need a vote?
There, there should be a vote and whether we're ready to do that tonight. There, there isn't a motion. I wasn't sure whether we were gonna be at that point, but.
There's no, there's no motion.
Not for tonight, but if the board is ready to take action, then I think it's certainly good.
Do we have a motion to take action? And revive and revive and appoint to this? It shouldn't be an ad hoc, though. It should really just be a regular committee.
Yeah, yeah, it should be, this should be like a forever.
Yeah, I mean, everything changes constantly.
Yeah, this is a forever.
This is so many, there's, there's so many things that fall under this Energy Conservation umbrella that.
It's not going right.
No, no, no.
Whose oversight do you want it to see if fall under, other than not yours? I mean, where, where would the appropriate place be?
I, I think if it's focused on municipal and school facilities, it probably would need to come out of the Department of Public Works. Um, but I will tell you that I'm concerned about the capacity there right now.
I don't disagree.
You know, so, um, there isn't a great.
No, but if you have your superintendent of buildings, potentially being the focal point initially to.
I think that, I think he could certainly assist, uh, with it, um, but I, I will tell you.
And, and maybe partner with the facility person over at the school department to coordinate the effort. And again, focus on the municipal portion first, municipal buildings first and as that evolves into other things we can do within the community.
Great. Okay.
So, anyway, I, 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 I turned it, but I don't disagree that the Department of Public Works Director is out of time, you know?
Yes.
He's, he's been, he's got an awful lot on his plate right now.
And I, I also concerned for the buildings superintendent, who's got a backlog of capital projects. He's trying to catch up on.
And since it's a committee, it's a select board committee, right?
I think that's how it's proposed, right?
So, why don't? Why don't we let Mr. Walner get it organized for us? Not that he's not already.
Yeah, but it generally.
Well, this is Leanne, so, I mean, this is Leanne. She's a liaison for us, so let's, you know.
Leanne probably has a hundred people that you could think of that would wanna serve on it.
I'd certainly be happy to help.
Maybe, maybe if Madam Chair, it's where you, if we could maybe get the committee going, I could talk the staff about.
Let's get with the committee going and talk to us.
I tell you what, why don't, why don't, why don't Mr. Walner, Mrs. Gonzalez, speak with the town administrator, come back with a proposal for the board for the next meeting, you know?
Right.
Two meetings from now or something. Just to, you know, what's gonna work, what's gonna work?
Sounds good. So, no motion yet, but other than, you, you ready for that? Are you ready for that, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
That's gonna be, that's gonna probably generate a lot of interest, because people are really focused in on Energy Conservation right now. All right.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right.
Next order of business is a memorandum of agreement, DPW Teamsters Local Twenty-five, and we have a vote to ratify?
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to ratify and sign the memorandum of agreement between the Town of New York Redding and the DPW Teamsters Local Twenty-five for the term expected July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
No.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. Studo. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a good opportunity for us to thank our DPW workforce, um, for all the things and all the, all the, all the things they already do for the town. But all the extra things they jumped in to help out and do for the town, so.
Especially during our trash situation, they were right there. They were fantastic.
Right. And they, there's every time you do, we do call them on things, they get right on top of it for the town, so. They're very responsive and they mobilize right away.
An example, and I don't know if anyone was with me, but this morning, um, they were attending to a clogged culvert. It was in the high twenties, they were in a kayak, in a kayak, trying to deal with the issue. I mean, that's, this is what our guys do, you know, so it's, we're very fortunate.
That's great. Okay. Next order of business? We can do the minutes?
Got legal bills.
And I think we can, um.
Legal bills?
No, someone, I, I think my colleague asked me to skip over those legal bills.
Please.
Okay, do we have a motion about legal?
Yes. Um, Madam Chair, I move to approve payment of invoice one one four two seven dated November seventeen, twenty twenty-two for permanent credit of two thousand, that's up to up in the amount of two hundred forty-two thousand eight hundred eleven max.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in.
I'll just, I'll just say that I actually did do my homework and went through all the bills. As far as I can tell, we did what they were supposed to do and, um, you know, let's stay and be done with it.
Yeah, let's just be done with it. That's a.
I also went through it all, and this is the end of it. Maybe, Mr. Gilberto, maybe you'll just bring us all up to date.
Madam Chair, they, everybody knows I'm, you know, we're limited as to our comment with regard to the litigation, but we, um, we have received the required payments by both parties. Um, and we are in the process of making, uh, the one of the two payments due from the town to, um, the, the other side. Uh, it'll be on the warrant this week. Um, the final payment will come at some other point later in time. So, everybody's doing what they're supposed to do in terms of the process, which is really good for everybody involved.
And have we done the closeout to get that funding returned to us? That this took years to close out?
We have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday with the MSBA, and I give them a lot of credit for making sure that they sort of quarterback getting things going. And, uh, both, both parties have been very responsive with trying to get to that meeting. So, I'm, I'm optimistic that things will move pretty quickly after that happens, so.
And is this, it was up to up?
That is my understanding from.
This is their last payment, it's fun?
His, the only remaining action will be to notify the court, and, um, if that hasn't happened already, it may have already happened, but my understanding from him is that that will be it.
And when you reviewed the bill, did he bill us for that notification?
He did not bill all of the communication.
So, we're, we're probably gonna get another bill after this.
No, he told me he wouldn't bill it, wouldn't bill us.
See, some pro bono work.
I've heard that before.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Walner, a second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, there's a few in here. Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve payment of invoice six three four zero zero nine four dated nineteen twenty-two, twenty twenty-two from Jams Incorporated in the amount of six thousand one hundred eleven dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner.
Did you get your Christmas card from the judge yet?
Second.
He left you.
Second, I need to send him a Christmas. Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any other ones?
Um, so now we're on to, uh.
Minutes.
Minutes, all the ones.
Um, and we have several minutes. Do, do my, is it, is it okay with my colleagues if we just, if there's? I believe the amendments have been made in the drop box that Mrs. McNeil left us. May we just take a vote to approve all of the minutes in just one omnibus motion instead of one?
Yeah, read the dates.
Read all the dates, all at once, right?
All right, so here I go, hang on. Madam Chair, I move to approve July twelve, twenty twenty-one regular session minutes, July twelve, twenty twenty-one executive session minutes. Um, August sixteen, twenty twenty-one regular session minutes, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-one executive session minutes. September eight, twenty twenty-one regular session minutes, September eight, twenty twenty-one executive session minutes. September twenty, regular session minutes, September twenty, twenty-one executive session minutes. October four, twenty twenty-one regular session minutes, October four, twenty twenty-one executive session minutes. November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one regular session minutes, and finally, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one executive session minutes as well.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next, next order of business, Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, uh, four items to report this evening. First is that I included a report from the Police Department regarding the speed of vehicles on Lakeside Boulevard. Um, the information is reported to the Department of Public Works for further review with the traffic engineers. We continue to look at the information relative to, um, the situation on Lakeside Boulevard. But, uh, the first step of gathering some speed data has occurred and we will be digesting that and looking further at that with some engineering help. Second is that the DPW Director and I will be working to amend the agreement with JRM for trash and recycling collection to reflect the assumption of the obligation by Republic, which has now taken over. Um, as well as a five-day collection schedule, uh, and to secure credit for the costs incurred as a result of the delayed and missed collections in October. Um, initial responses that we received from other vendors indicate that, um, continuing discussions with Republic is more favorable financially for the town. And that's not a surprise, based on the very initial feedback we got back in October. Um, and we do continue to see much more reliable performance from Republic over the past few weeks. Um, but there is some negotiation to occur, and we will be doing that in the coming weeks as well, to keep the community apprised. Relatedly, um, the pay-as-you throw program, um, is, uh, coming up and running. Um, right now, um, just to remind folks, the requirement is that for trash in excess of two fifty-gallon barrels, um, a pay-as-you throw bag must be used. The bags may be purchased from Christopher's, from Ryer's, from C V S, from Moynihan Lumber and from Redding Lumber. Right now, we're working to get them into Stop and Shop, but there's a more formal approval process that we're in the middle of still. Um, it continues to be a soft rollout, and by that, I mean, um, we've been collecting, but, um, begun the process of trying to warn folks with a sticker that would go on their barrel. Um, we're trying not to, there was a lot of disruption that happened in October. We recognize that, and we're trying to roll this in, um, as reasonably as we can. But we are not leaving trash curbside right now, and, and they're not planning to, uh, for at least probably another week or so. Um, but there is a requirement to put that trash in a pay-as-you throw bag. We're asking folks to do that. Um, and, uh, we'll be looking at, looking at that, um, um, more so as we move on into December. And the final item I'll just note is, uh, um, over at the library, and we have a staffing plan that the library director's identified, which would allow for us to better take advantage of funding in ours and to take what is effectively a single full-time position and create two part-time positions, um, which I think is really good and try to advance the cause, uh, for the library over there. It makes good use of existing, uh, resources. So, there will be a couple of postings. I encourage folks who are interested in working over at the library to take a look on the town website, um, in, uh, the course of the next, um, few weeks. Um, certainly send us your letter of interest and resume if you're interested. Um, and that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Questions from Mr. Gilardo?
Good.
Mr. Gonzalez and then Mr. O'Leary. Has anybody purchased a pay-as-you throw bag yet?
Has anybody, some folks have, yes. They're not, they're not purchasing them from us. They're being purchased from the stores, but there are folks who are purchasing them. I will tell you, I have not yet. I intended to and have not yet. But, uh, there are folks that are buying them. Um, you know, um, I will tell you, one obstacle to the stir enforcement is that JRM is still in the process, excuse me, Republic, is in the process of securing the stickers that we need to warn people. So, um, that, that's also not working in our favor. We're just trying to get people in the habit of using the bag first. That's really what we're trying to, to do moving forward. And again, we have increased that barrel limit from two thirty-five gallons to two fifty-gallon limits, so you are able to put more trash curbside before you need to rely on a bag.
Great, thank you. Mr. O'Leary?
Hi, just in relation to your neighborhood, Lakeside Boulevard, um, traffic study, uh, will that information, or has it already been shared with, uh?
With Mr. Parent. I, I believe that it has been.
Parent and any other residents, have been, someone else who corresponded through Representative Jones's office?
So, in the process of assembling it, I believe that, uh, that the, the primary acquiring resident, uh, was gonna be updated today with the.
Okay, and again, I wanna, you know, acknowledge, uh, the quick action by the Police Department in moving forward with the traffic study, uh, taking the necessary steps to determine whether or not it would qualify for any type of traffic calming, uh, measures if possible. And, uh, going through the appropriate steps that we have to go through to, to address the situations. We'd be congratulated, along in conjunction with the DPW, are working with them too. So, uh, but I just think it's important to communicate with the people who've reached out to us. You know, we can announce it here, but we should, you know, just reach out to those few people that, that corresponded with us and let them know that it's available. Here are the files.
I know the intention was to reach out to the resident today. It's great.
Is there an update on, was it a little paralysis? Is there an update that should be?
It's mine. My neighbor there, she, she's in a household.
Is she okay?
She's actually doing really good. Yeah, I haven't seen the gash in the head yet, but, um, you know, she's doing great. She's amazing how little kids can bounce back so fast.
Yeah, thank God.
Really are serious situation. I was there when it happened.
Oh, you were?
Like a minute or two behind the actual house, so. And the neighbors see the speed monitor, they're very happy, I mean, informally, they're very happy about that. So, Sergeant, Sergeant Howell?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, he's taking good action to look at this, you know? You have to be fair with everything that's going on, but it appears he's taking good action and, um, the neighborhood's pleased to see that that came up and, you know, so we're happy to see that. Hopefully, that happens again.
Thank you.
Cause it was really tough.
Yeah.
It's really hard.
What's the speed limit there?
Thirty.
Thirty.
And the person was way over that? And the person was way over that?
Apparently, no.
Speed is not determined to be a factor in the accident.
So, thirty is just a little too fast for that road or?
It's not inclusive.
Yeah, the data would indicate that the speeds for a lot of folks is actually less than that. So, there's a bit to digest with regard to the results of the speed limit. It wasn't a full traffic study, it was to begin with the covert radar speed gathering exercise. So, now we need to take that information and turn it to the next step.
I mean, most of those roads over there, they're pretty narrow, aren't they?
Right.
And windy?
It's, there's.
Yeah.
There's a few stretches, this is one of the stretches where you can accelerate.
And it's actually, you know, there's the Lost Colony, you know, the Endover Lost Colony in the middle.
Yeah.
You know, they're trying to race around to get out, so it's a little different. Little different. I, I guess it's just a little bit of a rush.
But it takes a lot because we're still, we studied intersections and we had calming measures and things that we were supposed to be doing, and I don't, I still don't think they're done on some of the, you know, some of the roadways here. So, it seems like you could study and they can do the traffic studies, but it takes, it's like moving mountains to get, because there's some really dangerous intersections and accidents happen at regularly where kids are crossing and cyclists and pedestrians. And there's, nothing changes on that. Some places it just need a light, you know, they simply need a traffic stop, stoplight.
There is any, I'll just mention, because it came to my attention from all of us, is like up in Endover, they're considering a default twenty-five mile per hour speed limit unless it's not COVID-19. And apparently in Massachusetts, there's sixty communities out of the three hundred and fifty that actually have adopted that as a standard. So, it's a big change for a town to consider, but it's something, you know, people tend to go fast on some of the back streets here, you know, it's a thought to consider. And I'm sure that the Police Department thinks that, you know, safety thinks that's an important thing we should think about it. But it isn't, again, we're not leading the path. There's a lot of towns that have already adopted that as a standard for the town, is twenty-five miles an hour unless it's not COVID-19.
Right now it's thirty.
Right now it's thirty in this section.
I know what they do on Central Street over those hills. And we know.
Yeah.
It's not thirty.
On Park Street.
On that note, on the two intersections that have got approved to be done, is anything happening on those? There were four, and we, the Finance Committee approved two, correct?
I believe the construction funding was for the one at Haverhill and Chestnut. So, there's a design that's underway for that intersection. I will tell you, I have pretty regular conversation with the Department of Public Works about the other two intersections. There was some striping that was done at Central Street and Park Street, at least to try to guide folks who are making that right turn from central south onto Park Street headed eastbound. I don't know how much attention it's actually getting with people, I see tire tracks go right over it. So, that's been a challenge. There was some updated signage that was done at those intersections as well. But you know, one thing that we've tried to look at outside of the Capitol Project is what can we do at Central and North, particularly coming down the hill on North, other than changing the grade of the hill, obviously. And some ideas we've been talking about internally that might be a little more straightforward and were identified in that first study, some sort of a warning kind of near the nursing home at that spot to prevent its speeds. So, that's something that we're looking into. I will tell you, we've been a bit frustrated by the fact that we have vacancy in the Engineering Department right now. So, we have an engineering firm that's focused on one project. We kind of have a smaller project that's also very important that we want them to work on, but no one to really oversee it with them right now. Which, by the way, I'm hoping to be able to resolve in the next week, and hopefully we'll have an engineer that will keep that moving. But in terms of the big funding, right now, it's the Haverhill and Chestnut intersection that's been receiving the attention because of the town meeting appropriation.
But didn't Brad Jones and them come through with some money for the other intersections? I thought they did. No, am I wrong about that?
I'm, I'm not, it's not coming to mind, I'm thinking of the Haverhill and Chestnut, but it could be. There may be, I know I take that back.
I thought there was money for the kid's spot, there was some money.
Yeah, yeah.
But I thought there was also some to, to the.
I'll go back and look, there's been like twelve different items that have gotten funded at different points, I'll go back to that.
I thought they were receiving that, because I thought they were gonna do more because of the funding they got from Brad Jones.
I'll have to go back and check. There was, there were a number of projects that were approved in the summertime, and then the funding never actually materialized because the bill didn't get signed into law. And then some of those projects came back again just a few weeks ago. I don't remember that being one of them, but I will check.
Yeah, you probably will, you know, whatever it is.
Okay, any other questions? All right, for all the board members and all the new, Ms. O'Leary?
Waste Water September meeting again tomorrow, so again, we're gonna be determining, you know, how we're gonna be moving forward and how we're gonna be looking at the financing of it. Again, the project cost is what it is, it's just a question of how we allocate the funding for it to whom. So, we're gonna be working on that and we'll report back as soon as we have any progress to be made. Just the Board of Health continues to meet on a regular basis too. And again, as we're talking about, you know, everybody's getting pretty comfortable with things, but the members are keep going up again. And just everybody be cognizant again, particularly over the holidays here, as people start to travel and all the rest. It's not just COVID now, it's the flu, I've seen a few other things going on. And Board of Health again continues to monitor and meet, and also spots of clinics and participate clinics. And that's all available on the website. Just urge people to visit the website, and if you want to get tested or you want to get vaccinated, it's all available. You're encouraged to do so. Just a more old business type thing, since our last meeting, election took place. I've acknowledged the effort that was put in by our local election efficiency and the clerk, the election workers. Worked well, the yearly voting, the mail-in voting, pretty much without a glitch. And participation level was pretty good, high, which was great. And I think that the end result and the messages were fairly clear. People just want some normalcy restored back to our political lives and some, I think, elected officials. I think we do a pretty good job here, but at other levels, keep the extremism to a minimum and just get the people's business done, stop the nonsense. But again, to the clerk and the election workers and everybody else that pulled it all off, you know, several week time period. Just be congratulated, appreciate it. Again, Leah and I were at the Thanksgiving dinner sponsored by Representative Jones and Senator Tarr and Linda Jones who pulls it all together. We were back inside a building, thank goodness, because it was gale force winds outside. If we were back outside handing out bags, I can't imagine how that would have worked.
I was being very thankful that we were inside.
We were thankful about a lot of things, but it was, it's wonderful to be back in. And we were back into the Hillview facility, again, to Adelson and Fabiano, the Ultra Sheep people who are now the operatives of the facility, they did a fantastic job pulling it all off. And again, it was just a good reminder, a sense of community that we have, the type of community we have. We have events such as this to gather together as a community, setting all of our political differences aside and just being grateful for what we have here. As evidenced tonight by our various different town employees and department heads that were here tonight, you know, constantly working beyond normal working hours, seven days a week. We just signed a contract with the DPW. I know we're all grateful and thankful for all that they do for us, and just want to ensure that everybody has a safe and happy and healthy Thanksgiving and travel safely, because everybody could be in the road, I guess, and traffic's unbelievable, and air traffic. So, again, grateful for our community, grateful for my colleagues in their service, the administration, and all the employees. Enjoy your holiday.
Thanks, thank you. Mr. Wallner?
Just two things, one is the Commission on Disabilities, we're actually working with Bill, and we brought in somebody from BU who's in the social work area. We're working on a survey, we hope to get out to the town to look at transportation. Part of it is going to be about transportation for the five demographics similar to what you saw before. It's going to be addressing the needs of the disabled in town and try to really get a handle on that that we haven't done before. So, that group is, from the start, you know, has really put a lot together. We've got some great resources and hopefully in the first quarter of next year, we'll have that survey out. It's really good information. It'll help launch Transportation Committee, it'll help the Commission on Disability do its work. It'll feed to the vet services, it'll feed to all the banking departments that deal with these types of activities. So, that's on a fast track. And the other one is I went to the CPC meeting the other night. Jerry Noel was there, the big thing out there, the reason why Jerry was there was because we were working on the accessory dwelling unit policy that we've been asking for. Jerry had reviewed it, he thought it was great, Daniel had done a really nice job writing it up. It's got legal verbiage and everything else like that. I had questions which were largely shot down, but that doesn't matter, they were good questions anyways.
If you do say so yourself.
What's that again?
If you do say so yourself, they were very good questions.
They were good questions, I got a little support from the audience after you actually asked the questions, it got shot down. But it doesn't matter, the important thing is the accessory dwelling unit policy will come to our attention. They'll be bringing it to us for like a workshop so we can review it as well. But the important thing is for our town is to be able to allow caretakers and/or family members to live in the houses and help the people stay in their homes and do it with the blessing of the town. It's really an important thing to keep people in their homes. And so, this is, this is the most practical thing we can do right now to help people out. So, really excited for how it comes forward to us, hopefully some of them learn some.
So, it's coming to us as a zoning change, zoning amendment?
Yes. Very, yeah. But well done and well reviewed and so, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wallner, Mrs. Gonzalez.
So, we had our Veterans Day at the Common, and we proclaimed the town as a Purple Heart community. It was a beautiful day, and everything went great. And then we also had our Veterans Dinner, that was really, really good. It's just such a great event. At the Pittsburgh Country Club, which will be the last year that we have it there, it's been sold. So, I think the plans are to move it back home, hopefully, hopefully at the Hillview next year. That would be really great. Just a great event that our Veteran Director works very hard on, and her new assistants and the Veterans Events Committee. And it all comes together beautiful, it's just a really nice sight. The Thanksgiving event was great, it was great to be back in the Hillview. And they're doing a great job over there, they're just really doing a fantastic job over there. It's nice to see it back in business. This Sunday, there are two events, there's the Reading North Reading. My mind is.
Tree lighting.
Chamber?
Chamber Palmer, thank you. Is having the tree lighting at the Common. And also, the Moose is having their Festival of Trees, which is a great thing to go to too also. So, those two events are going on this Sunday, if everybody wants to get out and get a little Christmas spirit.
Think the tree lighting's at two on the Common?
You know, I don't have my phone with me, so I don't have to.
Two thirty to four thirty, and the tree lighting is generally around four thirty.
Around four thirty, it's getting dark.
Just me, so.
Yeah.
But there'll be activities from two thirty to four thirty.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Studo.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good. I'll say, the Veterans Ceremony, I think, was probably the largest group of participants that we've seen in a while. It was a beautiful day, but there were so many people there. And even though the day wasn't about us, and it was largely about thanking veterans, but also that we became a Purple Heart community. Senator Tarr still surprised us because he read a citation for us for implementing the Purple Heart community. So, I don't know who has that, but probably Sue has it.
She was probably, yeah.
Yeah, but it was just well done and well attended, and the band was excellent, and the scouts were there to help out, and the police honor guard was there. It was just very, very well done. I would really thank Sue and her whole team for doing that, and thank all the veterans that came to that. And hopefully, we can keep this sort of contribution purple. One of the Veterans Purple Heart story as told by his grandson was ran there. It was really just amazing to hear what people went through to get those Purple Hearts. And they also gave an award.
The Liberty Award.
The Liberty Award to a family from whose son passed away in battle years and years ago.
Korea War.
So, it was a really moving ceremony and just really well.
Always well done.
Well done, yeah. And so, that was really nice. I want to echo my colleague, Ms. O'Leary's, comment that I am very grateful to be working with all of you. All of the effort that you put in, sight unseen. And sometimes critics can come out of the woodwork and don't realize everything that's done and all the commitment and all the investment. But I'm lucky enough and fortunate enough that I work with all of you. And like Ms. O'Leary said, we may not always agree, we may have some nice debate, but at the end of the day, every single person here is invested in the best interest of the town and the best interest of the citizens of the town. I'm very grateful to be here with you, I'm very thankful. Thankful to be in this town and thankful for the administration, thankful for my colleagues for your commitment. And I hope, wish everyone a peaceful Thanksgiving, safe and peaceful Thanksgiving too.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, one other thing. The Northbury High School Fall Sports Teams.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
The football team, yeah.
Well, you get the girls soccer, boys soccer, well into the extra season, the divisional championships, great success there. Football, they're going to the Super Bowl.
Going to the Super Bowl.
And fantastic.
Track, track team made it to the States.
Yeah, track team made it to the States, unbelievable. And then we've got, then we've got the kids in the performing arts that are just making a name for themselves too. And you know, the community can be very proud of the school system, not just the education these kids are getting, the book, you know, reading, writing arithmetic, but all these other extracurricular things that help form your belt for tomorrow.
Wow.
What a terrific, what a season for them.
And kudos to the high school band, sounded phenomenal.
Excellent, excellent.
And they've got their new uniforms, they're looking good, yeah.
I have, I had three things I wanted to mention, and you just reminded me what the third thing was. I can't believe I forgot to do this. The High School Mascar's performance of Pippin is coming up, the first and second week. So, Friday, December third and fourth, and then Friday, I think, tenth, the next week, Friday and Saturday of the following week. Tickets are available if you go online, Mascar's weekly, you can go to the link and buy tickets. And although there are tickets available, this usually, these usually sell out. They're very reasonable, it's an amazing production. Mrs. Kane puts on a Broadway part in this production. I have a kid who's gonna apparently be dangling in the air, and also it's fun circus stuff. But he's loving it, he's having a grand old time, so. It's supposed, she always outdoes herself, and these kids are so invested in this and just loving it. And it's a great group of people from the little kids that come in from the, you know, the younger kids that participate to the people that run the tech crew, it's just amazing, so. So, please come and see and enjoy the show, because it's supposed to be pretty, pretty good. And that's coming up, so get your tickets quickly. All right, I forgot that, how could I have forgotten that? All right, so.
Madam Chair, I oppose Regent.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Ms. O'Leary, all those in favor?
Aye.